Welcome to the August 1, what happened to July meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. So we're going to start off with approval of the last minutes on July 18. So you all got those by email and they're also, yep?
You have two sets of minutes, June 20th. June 20th and July 18.
June 20th, that's what I meant to say, June 20th and July 18. So we'll start with June 20.
I'll move to approve the minutes of June 20.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. July 18.
I'll move to approve the minutes of July 18.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions. So we're going to do, we're going to go a little bit out of order and we're going to do the sign first. So, come on up.
Hey. I'm Eric from Amherst Copy &amp; Design Works. So I was the one putting together the drafts of the signs here. So there's going to be, basically, the first page of this, hopefully everybody's is in the same order, but the first page is the directory sign.
Excuse me, could you show us just what?
Yeah, yeah, totally. So right there, yes, it's probably all out of order, sorry about that. First, the first one is the directory sign, which is pretty self-explanatory. It's double-sided, so there's actually two signs there. And there is a, right now, there's a vacant sign there and I'll just take that spot. And then there's two entrances to the hospice shop at the Fisher Home. This is a little bit unique because the location there previously, both doors were totally fine for people to go in. At this location, it's sort of being split up. And so the left side is going to be where people bring their donations and the right side is going to be more the shop area. So it's kind of like a Goodwill or Salvation Army, where you have to go around back to bring your donations. Same sort of idea, except the left is the donation side. That's what we have to make clear with the signage here. So the signs going above the two main doors, those ones are just going right over the existing signage that is there. So there's really nothing special about those, they're just going to go right on top of what was already there. What's new is next to the vinyl that is going on each of the windows, or the doors, rather, there's a 24 by 36 inch, or a 2 by 3 foot sign that basically just lets people know which is the shop entrance and which is the donation drop-off. So we just wanted to make it very clear so that people don't use the wrong door. So that's the only signage that's really being added that wasn't already at this location for the fitness club that was already there.
Just to let you know, this was a plan approval that was approved in 1985 and one of the stipulations of the plan approval was that all the signs need to be reviewed and approved by the planning board.
Any comments from the planning board? I see none. Greg?
Move to approve the signs as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion? I guess I should ask just out of, is there anyone here from the public that wanted to speak about the sign? You want to speak on the sign?
I'd like to ask question as a.
Please come up and I. Just a reminder, there is a motion in a second, so.
My name is Nancy Higgins, I'm a resident of the town and I am disabled. My question is about the access for people with disabilities into the hospice shop and access at the rear for donations.
My name is Elizabeth Weisbach, I'm the executive director of the Hospice Fisher Home and the hospice shop is part of the organization. The access to either side, one side, one entrance being the shop and to the left, the donations, are easily accessible, they're street level and you walk right in. And we've put in railings to the main retail area and also little ramps so that all the thresholds are flushed to the floor. So we are very conscientious and very careful about making sure that anybody with any disability has easy access and it's all floor level. There are restrooms that are on the main level and there's no hindrance to, or hindrance of access to any part of the shop or the donation area.
Thank you. So there's a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for all you, all you do. You're free to go. So that actually puts us on time for the 7:05 scenic road joint public hearing with the tree warden. And this is the part where I ask if I have a preamble.
Yes. And if you can't find it, I have one.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5C, Scenic Roads, and Chapter 87, Section 3, Shade Trees, this joint public hearing between the planning board and tree warden has been duly advertised in the Daily Hampshire Gazette and posted in the Town Hall. The first one that we're going to hear is a 7:05 scenic road tree removal. Wait, oh, these are both together. Scenic Road tree removal to allow construction roadway improvements and a bus pull-off at the following locations. East Hadley Road, public shade trees impacted by this project include the following trees. These are all diameter at breast height, 28-inch red oak, 8-inch white oak, 30-inch white oak, and a clump of black cherry with stems of 6 inches, 3 inches, 10 inches, 5 inches. And at another site, East Pleasant Street, public shade trees impacted by this project include the following trees. Seven clumps of Amhercork trees with stems ranging from 3 inches to 10 inches and then a 9-inch black birch. So, I turn it over, are you, you're the applicant?
Yep. The town is the applicant, yes.
Yeah. So you'll be speaking for the town?
I will.
Okay.
Do we want to discuss the site visit first?
Why don't you present what's going on and then we can talk about the site visit.
So the town, on East Pleasant Street, the town's going to be improving the bus stops on either side of East Pleasant Street and then extending a bus sidewalk all the way down to Owen Drive. The Owen Drive side, the sidewalk extension side, there are going to be no tree impacts. On the western side of the street are where the Amhermackia, sorry, the Amhercork trees and the black birch are located. They're going to be installing, town will be installing a bus pull-off over there requiring quite a bit of filling, fixing some drainage issues. And that's pretty much the project on East Pleasant Street. On East Hadley Road, they're going to be installing a multi-use path all the way to Hadley Town Line. And on the sort of last section from Whipple Tree towards the Hadley Line, there are the clump of oaks, white oak and another one of red oak and the cherries that will need to be removed in order for the multi-use path to fit in within the right of way.
Thank you. So there was a site, two, well, a site visit today that, let's see, David, Christine, Jack and I, Christine Brestrop, all attended, in addition to Alan and then two other people from the DPW. So does anyone want to report on that?
So the four of us were there and Mr. Snow explained the projects and we saw the lay of the land. I guess I'll report on both. So the East Pleasant Street, we went to first and it was explained how there'll be some, the trees need to be removed so that the area of the land can be widened to fit the sidewalk. So there'll be some fill involved and there are an additional couple of other trees that they're going to make every effort to save during construction. And there weren't, I don't think there were any questions, it was pretty straightforward. So then we drove down to Old Hadley Road and we looked at the two groupings of trees. Again, it's weighing the benefits of a multi-use path, widening the road, they're shifting the road a little bit to make room for this 8-foot wide multi-path. And these trees need to be removed. And that was it.
Can we normally hear from the public shade?
Yeah.
I just thought, I thought for the East Pleasant Street that the invasive, that the trees are invasive were, kind of had a, an additional agenda just to remove those for the, for the fact that they were invasive. Is that true?
Correct, they are on the Massachusetts Invasive Species List. And it looks like based, that they're all clumps, that they were already cut once for some reason and they have regenerated again, so.
We normally hear from the public shade tree committee and I see some members here.
Hello, I'm Henry Lepin, I'm the chair of the shade tree committee. We did site visits ourselves a few weeks ago and looked at them. In terms of the East Pleasant site, we agreed unanimously that the cork trees could be removed, but we requested that the black birch be protected with a retaining wall to prevent the infill from destroying the roots and trying to preserve that tree. It seemed like a reasonable compromise. Could have a nice tree that's a native tree and have the bus stop and everything else. Excuse me. Should I go on to the other one?
Yes, if you're, sure.
Okay. And then in terms of the East Hadley Road project, you know, we don't want to be opposed to development of a bike path and a multi-use path. However, being a scenic road and you widen it with more and more pavement, it no longer becomes a scenic road. So according to the letter of the law, you could remove those trees and we could put in the path and you'll really lose the spirit of the law, it will no longer be a scenic road. We unanimously voted to oppose the removal of those trees for that reason primarily. It seemed like putting in an 8-foot wide sidewalk, it's called a multi-use path, but there's also bike lanes there. Putting the bike lanes in the 8-foot wide path or sidewalk seemed crazy in an area with very little foot traffic. Certainly further down toward Graff Park, there's a lot more development, a lot more construction, a lot more reason to have a wide sidewalk, but to lose the trees, not only lose the trees, we're also losing the ability to put in new trees in that area. So it seemed like a big loss.
Thank you. You have questions? Yeah.
So the 8-foot takes out the trees, but even if we reduced it to a 5-foot wide sidewalk, which of course we want sidewalks, there's a lot of density on that road with the apartments and people trying to walk to get to work or shop at the stores or catch the bus. So I think, I don't know if all the trees, but wouldn't most of them still have to be removed even if we reduced it to a 5-foot, which is what the Mass DOT says sidewalks should be?
During the site visit today with the planning board, the town engineers were there as well and went a little more into detail with me on, and the members of the planning board, on the issue of, in order to fit the sidewalk in over there, which there currently is no sidewalk at all, the trees are approximately 4 feet from the road there. They're actually pushing the road to the west to make more room for the sidewalk on the east side of the street. There's only an 18-inch grass belt separating the new multi-use path and the road. And because the trees are higher than the surrounding area, the amount of excavation going to take place, even if it was just a 5-foot sidewalk, there's just too close to the trees to keep the trees, in my opinion. We'd be better off putting, taking the trees out now, there is a significant amount of mature trees behind them and we could plant some new trees as well with some permission from the property owners in the area to make up for it. But I agree, it is, it's, they're beautiful white oak trees on that side and the red oak tree a little further down. And it's a bit of the, you know, it's the complete streets, every tree warden's fear because, you know, you get access to all these great resources and to improve our streets and sidewalks, but it does put a lot of pressure on our green infrastructure. But again, it is just standing there, it is a dangerous road to be a pedestrian or bicycle son and there's not much we can do to make room for the trees there.
Good question.
And I don't know if you know this, this may be a DPW required answer, but it was our understanding that from where we were standing, looking at these two groups of trees, that the project would start at the Amherst-Hadley Line and then go down the road quite a bit past the apartments. How, do you know how long, because, or Chris, maybe you know, how long that project is going to be? Because it's kind of amazing if these are the only two groups of trees that have to be removed for, I mean, it could be half mile, I don't know.
The project is being done in phases. The first phase is from the Hadley Line to the, I can't remember the name of the road, it's to the apartment complex.
Oh.
Where the new bike share pad is.
Okay.
So it's staying on the, I believe it's the east side of the street there, or south side of the street maybe. So it's stopping there and then it's going to cross over in Phase 2 and go all the way to West Street or South Pleasant Street. Yeah.
Just in case you're interested, this is a project that's paid for by the community development block grant funds and it's meant to give the people in the apartment complexes there a more easy way to get around. Some of them don't have cars and so they'll be able to use the multi-use path and there is also going to be a, or there is now a bike share station there so they can use the bikes as well.
So the missing links are the Hadley part and then the bike share station where the shopping is in Hadley and then it'll be amazing.
Yeah.
So it's hard to lose trees and it's hard to lose trees even for good causes, so, and the whole point of scenic roads is often discussed here is, in a way, the scragglier the more scenic, right? So they're scenic because they're sort of a little bit unkempt and, you know, they're, yeah, so they're not manicured.
Natural's a better adjective than unkempt, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was, unkempt had a negative tone, but they're in situ, they're not manicured. Yeah. They are as they are. What was the word used?
Natural. Natural. Natural, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Let's strike the word unkempt from the record, please. I meant non-manicured.
The natural state.
I'll add to that statement about scenic roads. So scenic roads really are, you know, it's road by road and it's community by community. And in my looking at East Hadley Road, you know, it is going to take, you transition from the farm fields coming towards town and you greeted with a, an old, a tree canopy as you enter the town. And then it relatively quickly transitions into a little bit more of an urban feeling to it as you get closer to the apartment complexes. So it's, it's a bit of a rest for the eyes as you come over the hill there. But again, we do keep, you know, looking at the positive side of it, there are significant trees there ready to fill the space and it will take some years to catch up, but that's the only positive side of this for the trees.
So the way that this, maybe you're going to tell us, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I have a plan, Ms. Gray Mullen was asking about the actual plan and the DPW sent it to me, so I can pass it down if anybody's interested in looking at it. Right now, it's just the, the south side of the road is going, south side, is that right? I think that's right, is going to have this multi-use path and so that's what's shown on those plans.
And the way that this works is that the planning board has, basically, we vote and we get one vote, the tree warden gets one vote, and if we agree, that's it. If we don't agree, then it goes to the select board, correct?
Correct.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Snow, the one white oak, which was, how big was that? I guess it's the 30-inch one, seemed like it was bifurcated isn't the right word because that's two, but it seemed like it had a lot of trunks at the base. Is that, is that indicative of a, is that going to be a hurt of longevity, you know, in the end when it's got that many trunks at the base?
Appears to have been a tree that grew in the open at some point in time where there's maybe more field there or something. It's the oldest tree in the area, it looks like. So it probably branched out a lot lower and didn't, you know, develop a single long stem. There, they seem, the tree seems to be relatively healthy, I mean, for a tree that size next to the road, that's been devoured by gypsy moths this past year, this summer. There are some, there is some decay in it, but again, it's not at a point where it's really a concern. It appears to be a perfectly healthy white oak tree.
30-inch, that was the way.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one, one thing about the low branchinging is that we will need to prune all of these trees to maintain our 14-foot road clearance. And we're pushing the sidewalk, by installing a sidewalk there, we also have to maintain sidewalk clearance. So the two main leaders that go over the road from that tree are going to have to be pruned off. And they're pretty significant cuts to make.
So how does this work? Is there, is this time, is there a motion to be made?
Yes.
So I moved, and it's one motion for both sites.
However you want to construct it, you could separate them or you could do one motion?
Well, the, it seems non-controversial, less controversial, I mean, removing trees is painful, but for the East Pleasant site, so I moved to allow for the removal of the East Pleasant, the site, the trees on the East Pleasant Street for the purpose of the roadway improvement.
Second.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there any chance we could save the, the black birch tree?
So I did talk with the engineers about the black birch tree and they do believe that it's, it's possible, there's a pretty good chance that we'll be able to, because it's right at the extent of the fill, that they will be able to do some tweaking there, try to keep the fill away from the trunk of that tree. So I'm, I'm good with keeping that tree and trying to preserve it.
So do I amend that motion or do I amend the motion then? This is my first attempt.
You're good, taking that off the table.
I think so, yeah.
So if, I would amend the motion then to permit the removal of the trees and if possible, to preserve the black birch, but if that becomes unfeasible at the discretion of the crew, that, that, that would be, that removal be permitted?
You okay with that, at the discretion of the tree warden?
I'm not quite sure whose discretion it would be, honestly.
The tree warden.
Okay, the tree warden.
Second.
Discussion of that. All in favor, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. And then, East Hadley Road?
Now you're looking at me to make the motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that what it means to sit in this seat? I, I also, again, it's hard to move, but I think they are, it is a balancing of interests, but I would move to permit the removal of all of those trees for the purpose of the roadway improvement.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're going to move on to SPR 2018-16, SPP, special, special, special permit planning, 2018, 04 Archipelago Investments LLC, 26 Spring Street. This is a continuation from July 18 and as a reminder, this is a request for site plan review, approval for a mixed-use building under Section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw with 58 apartments and 1,000 square feet of retail with associated site improvements and request a special permit for modification of a height less than 2 feet and rare setback requirements under footnote A of Table 3 of the zoning bylaw. So we have a slightly different crew here today than we did on July 18, so we should explain a little bit what's going on. So if you can, if you could just say that you, okay, so if you.
So Ms. Riahy is taking advantage of the Mullen Rule, which allows someone to miss one of the public hearing sessions and to attest in writing that he or she has read the material and watched the videotape and Ms. Riahy has done that, I have her note here with me. So she's prepared to vote on this project along with the rest of the panel.
We are operating with a quorum for either the site plan review or the special permit. So if you, so we've done the disclosures and all that, or, you have any disclosures? Okay. We've done the disclosures and all that at the last meeting. So if you can just fill us in on what's happened from your perspective in the last two weeks?
Dave Williams, Archipelago Investments, South Amherst.
Excuse me?
And I'm sorry, yeah, you have to use a mic. You'll have to repeat what you just said.
Dave Williams, Archipelago Investments, living in South Amherst. I'll be passing out to you now the revised perspectives showing the elimination of the street trees.
Let me start off with, I'm concerned about the.
I'm going to use the mic.
We did a study using a program off the internet, using Boston as the shadow location because we couldn't get to Amherst, I mean, that was the closest we could get. And as you can see, oh, fantastic. It's the next one down. I think it's the second one down from the top, section through. Yeah, that's it. Well, this is, we did it in kind of like a Cartesian coordinate system where we took all the grades and ran them according to the grades that we were given off the site, the town grading plan. We also measured the height of all the buildings on Spring Street, going from Gray's Church all the way back to the Jones property, including the Priscilla Park House. The green dot that you, that you see there is a tree that is located in plan and in height. As you can see, the sunrise at December 21, which would be the lowest on the horizon. As you can see, the sunrise at December twenty-first, which would be the lowest on the horizon at seven fifteen AM, the sun angle, the angle of the sun is longitude and latitude, as you can see there. So, it clearly misses our building. And as well as if you go below the angle coming in over our building, if it were to be any other time of the year, it's almost level with the Priscilla Park House to the base of the stained glass window. So, from this analysis, both height and grade, we were able to determine that our building will not be shading at any time the stained glass window.
I think there was another point that Archipelago wanted to make with this drawing, which was that the height of the building at fifty-six feet, seven inches, or whatever it's going to be, is not higher than Grace Church because Grace Church is up on a rise. So, this drawing shows the relative heights of the buildings along that side of the road.
Any comment? The other item was, was the reflectance off of our building. And I'll pass out another item for you here. This is Pittsburgh Plate Glasses, the kind of glass, glass that we'll be using. As you can see on that in the specifications, that glass can be coated after test in terms of reflectance and the location. There are various kinds of coatings they can put on it. But we believe that once we have a sample of that glass, we can do tests on the site and find out how much reflectance there is going out. Also, it could be that the whole building does not have to be coated, but probably just to, because you're producing windows in mass production, it makes no sense not to. So, I think that was that. On Monday, I presented to DAC and they were concerned about the location of a van drop-off. And so, we, in a plan which I'll show you now, if I can find it.
So, anyway, as you can see.
I'm sorry you have to use a mic. Sorry about that.
It's got a mind of its own. Well, anyway, as, as we're trying to find that plan, the, as I say, DAC is concerned about van drop-off there. We'll just go from this one. That'd be marked.
So, here is van drop-off area.
Also, it would be serving to pick up trash as well as any type of servicing to the building. But it probably would act much like how the Lord Jeff does it. They, they double park, they do their business and then they take off.
So, there were concerns in this area be also that the planning board would look at it in terms of it be designated as a handicap drop-off. And they would also be looking for other parking opportunities in the area for people with disabilities.
Chris.
So, this plan doesn't show the latest information. It's a little bit out of date. We met with Mr. Williams and Mr. Wilson last week and talked about having a twenty-foot-long, five-foot-wide dropped area of the sidewalk. That would be similar to the area that's out in front of the Lord Jeff. This plan shows something slightly different from that. The drop-off would be right in the location of where the existing driveway is. And I believe that Mr. Wilson was trying to get updated drawings from SVE Associates, but weren't, they weren't able to produce the drawings in time. So, there will be another revision to this plan. My understanding is, I believe Mr. Wilson agreed to that scheme. We discussed it with the building commissioner. And just to let everybody know, any work that's done in the town right-of-way needs to be approved by the select board. So, this can be proposed, but what actually happens is up to the select board. Mr. Williams and Mr. Wilson will go to the select board and request to do this work. I'll also point out one other thing, that this is a request by the Disability Access Advisory Committee. It's not a requirement. So, it's very, it's a very good thing to have, to have the ability to drop somebody off here at this location. But according to the, according to the AAB and ADA, it's not a requirement, according to the building commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, when that plan is being done, was there consideration between the handicap spot and that bump out where there is a pole, a utility pole? If the poles were not to come down, I would want to see enough space between those two to have a parking space because I would hate to see that amount of space wasted that could potentially be a spot.
I'm sorry.
I believe if we have the, if we had the existing conditions plan here, I could show you that the driveway for this building is actually more towards the west. And so, the location of the dropped sidewalk will be more towards the west, towards that small bump out and that there will be then room for parking spaces beyond that. That's my understanding. That's what we discussed with Mr. Wilson and Mr. Williams. I think it was last Thursday, the building commissioner and I met with him. So, we had a place for that drop-off that was in the location where the driveway is. I don't think I have, oh, I must, yes, I do. I have a copy of the existing conditions plan. It's a large-scale plan, but if you'd like to look at it.
There we go.
So, if you'll note, on this plan, you'll see where the existing driveway is. And that's where the twenty-foot-long bump out, or not bump out, dropped, or dropped sidewalk would be. That driveway is not twenty feet wide in my estimation. So, if you started at the eastern end of where the driveway is and worked towards the island, I think you'd get twenty feet in there. And then, you'd have the other parking spaces beyond that to the east. And that's the theory, that we would not be losing any parking spaces.
Steve, I have one more.
Okay.
So, it would be as close to the utility pole as possible.
Yes.
And my second question with that is handicap pull-off, that's wonderful. Would it be able to be used by shared ride like Uber and Lyft also? Or would it only be for handicap and the commercial?
My sense is that that space really won't be used that much. I mean, if a van drops somebody off or picks them up, they usually do that within about ten minutes. So, therefore, I mean, ten minutes and, you know, ten times a day, that's still a hundred minutes.
So, I think this is a conversation that Archipelago needs to have with the select board, exactly what the nature of that space is. I understand that the Lord Jeff, for their space, they actually pay the town. They have a number of spaces right around their building that they reserve for their own use. And they pay the town something like eight thousand dollars a year to reserve those spaces. So, if Archipelago wished to reserve this space for its own tenants, then it might enter into an agreement with the town. If it's purely a drop-off for anybody, handicapped, Uber, whatever, anybody's in, that's in that neighborhood, that would be something else. But that's really up to the select board to determine exactly how that agreement is made with the town manager's assistance.
Okay.
And lastly, as I remember, the, we met with the DRB last night. And I think you have their, their minutes to that meeting.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I keep popping up my hand. But Ms. Catherine Porter is here from the DRB, in case you would like to hear from her.
So, let's just gather our thoughts here for a second. So, what else, what other things had we talked about last time?
Minutes of the eighteenth, have had a list at the end.
So, I do have a question of what we can or can't do. So, there's a lot of discussion about the old scheme, but this is a new application, correct?
It is.
So, the old scheme. Yeah.
So, at the last meeting, we were told this was a modification of the existing.
Yep.
Is that what this is or is it a new?
It says that also in here. It says a modification of SPR, yep.
It's a modification of the previous plan, but it is a new application. We've taken it in as a new application with a new fee, new, all new paperwork. And in fact, the building commissioner recommended a condition that says that the old permits would be rescinded if you were to approve these applications.
So.
Sweep the old one out and this is the new one. So, in a way, it's very, it's kind of a gray area in our world.
Because the old one, the old one, the twenty seventeen one is still alive.
It is alive right now, yes.
At some point, you can't have two special permits for the same property, can you? Whereas you can, we can't have two active special permits, can we? Or?
Building commissioner recommends against that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Or, or site plan reviews. You have a question or?
I'm so confused.
Yeah.
So, so the last meeting, it was a modification, but we're not, now we're treating this as a whole new one. And if, if we approve a new one, you're saying the old one becomes gone? And they don't have a choice to go back to their old plan? So, but, okay.
It's, it's a very, it's a difficult thing to grasp. If this were a really small tweak, then you might just say this is an amendment to the previous permit. But this is sort of a modification of the whole building, the whole site. You know, it's all, it's different. It's, everything is different. So, we did use the word modification last time, but it is in fact a new application. New site plan review application and a new special permit application.
Okay. So, everyone, hopefully everyone, yeah, go ahead.
Well, may I, I just want to ask the converse to the question. So, if today, if the new application were not approved, that means that the current permits are still live.
Yes.
And that's construction and that that could go on without further review by this board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, but, so what's, so for a site plan review, it's basically a by right. You know, it's basically a by right with conditions permit. So, no is the nuclear option, you know, basically. So, normally, the process with a site plan review is to work with the applicant on, you know, conditions that are, work with the community, work with zoning by law, work with, you know, various goals. So, the concept of just saying no so we can go back to the old scheme is not in the spirit of what a site plan review is. So, what's in the spirit of a site plan review is to work out conditions that are within the scope of the planning board to, to address concerns and opportunities. Complicated. So, that said, did everyone have a chance to read the design review board report that came out around three from Maureen? Paul, via Chris?
I, I, I mean, to be frank, I want to give this, I don't, I, I understand the spirit of the site plan review. But given the, the density of material that we've gotten.
Yep.
And the significance and the confusion, because I was really stuck on this modification and what that meant and all from, and, and so I, a lot of my thinking was, I didn't understand the first plan either because I hadn't been on this board.
Yep.
But, but I'm, I, I do not feel well enough prepared to, to be, make the informed decision, especially given the, the number of letters that we've received, including from another member. So, I mean, I'm, I feel a little at a loss and I'd rather be upfront about it then.
Yeah, yeah. So, the night is young and what we can do here is, and we have lots of experts, you know, we have the, from the DRB. I imagine that we, we have folks from the town that might want to speak also. So, the night is young and we can see if some of your questions and things that seem to be confusing become less confusing and, and we can decide whether or not we are at this point have, as a group, enough information to go ahead and take a vote. So, maybe the design review board report might be an appropriate next one to discuss. And I'm sorry, do we have hard copies of that?
Yes. It's in your secondary packet.
Yeah. Let me check.
It appears to me that Mike, Bert Wilson's email to us, or the, the note that was forwarded to us within the email is like excerpted from sections of the design review board sections. And I find, I find if Mike was going to put the most important stuff, he would have put it in his short note to us. And I did read that. And I suggest you might want to look at his email if you have that. It's short.
It's complicated because the design review board, to me, it was a two-night hearing. It was, there was one night and it was, so this is really a record of the two nights together. But this is informal, right? So, it's not been, has the actual design review board approved this?
They did suggest a design recommendation, starting on page five.
Starting on page five. So, it, it's a very interesting read. And I think that one of the comments that comes up is what is the scope of the design review board? And what's, you know, what's sort of appropriate part of the scope and what's not an appropriate part of the scope? And so, the, that would be a lens that I look at this is, you know, in some of the commentary, is this what we would normally expect from a design review board, you know, report or not? And that's open to discussion.
And their, their comments and thoughts are very important, but some of them are not in our jurisdiction. Like, we don't have any control over what they would like to see changed.
Yeah. So, it might be helpful if you're willing to, you know, to come and tell us what your, what your thoughts are.
I'm Catherine Porter and I'm the chair of the design review board as of last night. So, so just give you just a bit of history. Obviously, you know that we only make recommendations. We do not make policy. When Archipelago came to us the first time, I think we were a little taken back by the height of the building. But, but their original iteration included parking, slightly different configuration of windows, an art gap, proposed art gallery on the first floor. And all of those things together were a. those things together were appealing, given that the proposal was going to be focused more on appealing to maybe people who might want to retire and downsize. It was, the original proposition was for less students and more couples, perhaps professionals. I don't know how that breakdown would necessarily take place. When they apparently went back to their own drawing board, they found that that was not going to be a practical proposal, so the proposal that you have here tonight was the change. And we discussed this for quite a while, actually, two different meetings, and I think the general consensus was the nature of the building, the height of the building, but the final design was really not in keeping with the spirit of that area of town, with the iconic Grace Episcopal Church and the Lord Jeffrey Inn, and the design being modified so that there is one large roof, no dormers, many more windows, no windows on the back of the building, left us in a situation where we just, as Design Review Board, didn't feel that it was an appropriate building at this time in that space. The vote was three to one. One member was very supportive of this design, and three members, and you can just tell from your, from the report that was handed in, really felt that it didn't fit in with the many, with the structure of the Design Review Board and what we are asked to look at. So we did actually look a little more thoroughly into this particular, because this is one of the few buildings we've had, really had a chance to weigh in on. So I think people think, well, we just look at the building, and if you like the building, you like the building, but we went a little further into considering the way in which it would relate to the town. Obviously, the issue of parking, and many of those things come up, they're not in our jurisdiction, I don't know whose jurisdiction they're in. So that's how we came to our decision, and I think you'll see that the points that you earlier discussed are outlined there, and that's how we came to our conclusion, our recommendation, our decision.
Thank you so much. So if you wouldn't mind hanging out, just in case there's questions? Yeah?
So can we take some of those, if we have questions, and go back and ask the developer? Like, one of them, the back of the building, it's mentioned a few times in their, the DRB's notes. And if you look at the old design, because I went back to the old, if you all, there were windows on the back, east, east peak, and not the west, and now there's no windows on the back. And when I read the DRB, at one point, it says because, and maybe Chris can weigh in on this, is that it's because the police have asked for no windows on the back, because it might be a safety issue? Where did that come from?
So that really came in late. Archipelago proposed the building with no windows on the back, and then in the last forty-eight hours or so, the police chief actually had a chance to look at the building and determined that he was very glad that the building had no windows on the back. He feels a little uneasy about having people be able to look out the windows here, right into the police yard, where they're, you know, constantly going back and forth. They have an operation that's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day, and people are often walking back in that parking lot by themselves, police, members of the police force, but nevertheless, they might feel vulnerable if, you know, there were windows on the back of the building. So he was, he was pleased with that state of affairs.
Yeah.
So the police, I've never been in the back of the police station. They don't have a garage or anything, their, their cars and trucks or whatever are just open in that back lot, so they would be unloading and loading things in there, is that what you're saying?
Many of them, I think they do have a garage, but many of their vehicles are in the parking lot, in the driveway. Yep.
I have a question, but on windows?
Yep.
But not on the windows on the back, so I don't know if we're done talking about...
Go for it, it's free for, we're gonna, we're just dialing here.
On one package, Mr. Williams, we have this west view, and the windows are, some are short and some are long as you go across, but those, now they all look like the same, same height?
Sorry, have to...
Oh, that's a balcony, okay.
Yeah.
So are the balconies there or not any longer?
You can see it on Kendrick Place and on One East Pleasant as well, that we have, what you see right there is a little bit darker.
Oh, I see.
Those are called Juliet balconies. They're just flush with the face of the building, so you can't put any, anything out there, but you can open, this is a full-height sliding door, that you can open it up. We even have people in, a couple in Boltwood Place who have a hammock inside that they just open it up and sit there and look at it downtown.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
So this would be for the developer. So the previous drawings had, you had living space on the fifth floor. Now there is no fifth floor, so the kind of peaky windows that were interesting are no longer on the roof line, and now it's a flush roof line that is not as interesting to look at. But we talked at the last meeting about solar going on the roof, and is that still the plan? And how much of the roofs would be solar panels, which is a trade-off for interest, solar's important?
We can go back to perspective, but we have one hundred kilowatt ready.
Oh, Dave, sorry.
Tape this.
I know, really, we need like, we need clip-on.
See, when you reach a certain age, you have short-term memory, you know. But anyway, the consultant that is doing this is putting arrays on each side of the roof. So east, east, west, west, and that's one hundred kilowatts worth of solar energy, all the way down. I mean, you can kind of see it as it goes down, that's the, those, that's, those saw teeth right there and there, that's the top of the construction of the solar array.
I have a follow-up.
Yep.
Follow-up is, so that's a lot of coverage, that's a lot of solar panel. How much of the building, any estimates on how much you're going to cover, and any extra that might be going back to the grid?
Right. Well, we haven't gotten the final numbers from the consultant, but it will handle all the common area spaces, and what's left over goes into, right back into the tenant spaces.
Oh, okay.
Yep. We haven't finalized the HVAC yet, so it'll probably be the same as on our other projects, but the technology changes like every six months in these things, so they get just more and more efficient all the time. But we are lead gold, as in our other projects, and the way we achieve that is we have three inches of insulation outboard of the sheathing, and then the brick is on top of that. So it's like building a thermos bottle, essentially. And so we, we achieve great savings as far as electrical costs for the tenants. And a lot of our tenants like one-stop shopping, they don't like to get a check for electrical, a check for water, a check for this, so we just put it all into one rental bill, and they get that, and they seem to be happy with it. Plus, they can check the electrical usage anytime they want, which is a monitor in their room.
Check.
The previous plan did not have solar, is that correct?
Correct.
So I think adding the solar, for me, is significant, especially with what the town's trying to do on the sustainability end of things. So I know the dormers would displace some percentage of the panels, but I really think that's a smart thing, given what we're trying to do.
Thank you. And I just, for the DRB report, and I mean all respect to the hard-working DRB, but I don't think I've ever seen one quite like this, because, and I guess maybe there was a rush to reach closure by tonight, but almost always, the conversation, almost always there's an effort to try to reach consensus on, you know, recommendations, but I'm not sure if I were the owner of the, you know, the developer, I would know what to do with the DRB report, because the, it makes it sound like if dormers are put in and windows are installed on the backside, then would the vote be flipped? Is that, but it seems to me that there are other issues embedded in here.
Can I bring up another one?
Yeah.
So one of them was the height, and there was that, that it's oversized and too tall. There was a, there was a slide that was up earlier with, that you, could that one go back up? That shows the, where it fits in the, with the other, the streetscape of height. And I didn't know, Chris, if there's anything else we can look at for that, we have so many drawings.
Sorry, Dave, you have to, I was just going to call you Mike, I'm going to call you Mike.
Thanks.
Mike, you have to use the Dave.
Here's the drawing, Ms. Graymon. So, Chris, if you could go through this, I guess this is the only drawing, because we had asked for this at the last meeting, to have a streetscape, to be able to better visualize where things were. Do you know the heights of, like, the steeple or the church building? And as you mentioned before, there's a rise, of course, it, the church is set even higher because it's higher up the hill, but do you have any other input to put on the heights?
I don't know the exact heights of the buildings, all I know is they're, they're relative heights, and there is a listing of elevations over on the right-hand side, I'll try to point it out to you.
We do have the height of the proposed building, don't we?
Yes. The height of the proposed building, this is two ninety, and that is where the first, the front side of the property, what do they call it, the average grade on the finished, the average finished grade on the street side of the property is where the height gets measured from, so that's two ninety, and the building is measured to halfway up the peak of the roof, and the last time I spoke with Archipelago, they said that was going to be fifty-six feet, three inches. There was a little bit of debate about whether it was going to be fifty-six, seven inches, but I think we need to clarify that. But in any event, it's fifty-six...
Can I interrupt one second? Aloud is fifty-five feet.
Aloud is fifty-five. So they're talking about extending the height either one foot three or one foot seven inches. And so the Grace Church roof is higher, slightly, slightly higher. It's about the same, actually, on that same line, and then the church spire is higher. And this is the Jones House, which is an apartment building.
Yeah.
So we don't have this information, but again, I'm looking at the drawings from way back when of the main street behind it, because there's, you know, this shows Spring Street, but there are also buildings behind, like the town hall is there, and the, is it a Mason's? No.
I have those drawings in my office.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
If you would like me to get those drawings, I can go and get them.
Oh, we did get that one tonight, didn't we?
But what we don't have is the Lord Jeff...
And how tall is the police station? So that was, see, if you're looking at all of this. Can we put this one up? Do we have the aerial of the...
One, two, three. Yeah, it's it.
This, the, right.
Well, actually...
And this, you know...
So when the police station was built, the fifty-five would have been...
Got in twenty seventeen, right.
I was actually picking up that picture.
And there's this.
Here's the Google aerial.
Yeah, there's this, see? And they put the peak in.
Also, Main Street is higher than Spring Street.
Right. What'd you see on this?
Police station's hard to gauge, because we're sort of looking at a basement level, because the driveway goes down to where all those cars are parked, there's a grade change down.
Where's this?
Police station. You're asking how tall the police station is?
Right.
Well, there's another factor here, and that is that our lobby floor was lowered by five feet, no, five and a half inches, as a result of lowering the sidewalk to accommodate the drop-off. So it could be such that the site could be graded in such a way that the whole building comes down another five inches, five and a half inches.
Yep.
Is that a possibility?
I don't see why not. I mean, we're, we're going from sidewalk, ten feet to the back of the site, and it's all going to be graded and finalized grading, and we're higher than, than the Jones, and we're, and the church is higher than we are.
Yep.
So at the last meeting, you all explained how there was the flush lobby, and then it rises for the retail, and then it rises again for the...
Yep.
So you would just drop those back ones five inches?
It makes sense. I mean, and if, if we have, we don't, we have not gotten the final engineering on dropping the sidewalk to accommodate the drop-off, so possibly, within that assessment, could be a way of just dropping the building and making the grading work toward the back of the site.
Yep.
So that would drop the average in the peak. What we're talking about is a foot and three inches or a foot and seven, it could come down maybe another five, five and a half inches.
Mm-hmm.
Well, my feeling is anything that could be done to lower it a little would be, I don't think this building is, you know, it's not higher than a lot of the other surrounding buildings, but you, we don't want to magnify the largeness either if it can be reduced.
Sure, I understand. No, we were very much way aware last night by the DRB, they had very good concerns that we took to heart. Yep.
And part of this is because you removed the basement?
No, we still have a basement, but it has storage in it for each apartment.
And that can be adjusted to just be dropped? Like, meaning you don't have a parking garage under there anymore?
Right. Or the height required for a parking garage.
Right.
Okay. I mean, the thing about doing these projects is that, I mean, we're even, on One East Pleasant, we're still, you know, adjusting things in order to make things work. It's not an easy process once you get into the real, reality of constructing.
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know if you're finished talking about the aesthetic issues, but we have Jim McPherson, who's the Director of Facilities of the town, and he has some concerns regarding the intersection of this property with the police station property, and you might want to hear from him.
Do you want to speak?
Hello, I'm Jim McPherson with the Town of Amherst, the Facilities Director. So we're primarily considering the abutment issues with this property. On the north side, there is a retaining wall, and this foundation is going to be essentially on top of it, and we're concerned about the forces of the building on the retaining wall, the impacts of construction on our site at the police station, and I'm not aware at this time of any requests for accommodation, I suppose, for constructing this building and impacting town property.
So legally, they, your retaining wall has to be, what, how it is now is how it has to end up after the construction of this, and they can't go on your property to build without... And they can't go on your property to build without your permission. So those are at their risk, because we also have a zero setback in the rear yard. And so the property owner has a right to build up to zero. And then, of course, to, unless they have very skinny workers.
Absolutely.
Then how they actually do the finishes and so forth is either agreed ahead of time or, but, so yeah, that's a very real concern. And Jack?
How close is the retaining wall to the property line?
We're not absolutely certain, but it's, we're talking inches.
Because, I say that because most of the retaining walls have tiebacks that hold the, the wall in place, which means that would be going onto the subject property.
Right, so it's an issue both ways, that there could be an encroachment of the town onto this property, yeah?
In theory, the original plans called for a footing to be on the police station side of the wall almost exclusively. There are no tiebacks shown. How was it constructed? We do not know.
So it's a two-way problem, yeah.
How tall is the retaining wall?
Approximately 10 feet.
Ah.
And when was it constructed?
1990, 1989, with the police station. I will say, however, that there was a stone retaining wall shown on the original plan, so it's been there for a great many years.
But replaced?
With concrete.
So is it beyond the integrity of the wall, your concern, that you want it, the finish of the project, that the wall? And are you averse to, I mean, this is a construction thing where they would put bracing or something on, temporarily on the, on the front side of the wall while they were pouring the foundation? Is it a, is that what you're looking for?
It's multiple facets, so we're going to put additional load on the soil that's going to impact the wall or the wall's foundation. We need the wall to remain so that the police station can continue functioning. The plans are not sufficiently detailed at this time to determine whether that's feasible or not.
Yeah, yeah, so this, you know, we're basically in conceptual or schematic design at this point. So, and my feeling is that we would definitely wanna have a condition that.
Yeah.
But that is also a assumed condition, that your property remains exactly the way it is before construction? So, and I hate to, I mean, there could be encroachments, you know, the other way.
So we raised the issue because it seems impractical at this time, based on the level of detail that we have, to accomplish the task.
Yeah, so they have the right to build to zero, and then it's up to them to figure out how to do that. And which part is zero, yeah?
So we have drafted a list of conditions, and one of the conditions at the very end has to do with this issue. The building commissioner and I worked on that condition together, where you may choose to require that there be a structural and geotechnical study of that area. And if the building commissioner and the facilities director are not satisfied with that study, that the developer would pay to have a third-party review. So that's also part of the condition that we're suggesting to deal with this issue.
It seems like it's getting a little bit beyond the scope of the planning board, because we're not the experts in soil, but we can consider that, I think. Was there, were there other issues, or?
Primarily the, the impact of the construction on the operations of the police station.
Yeah, that's, that's a big one.
Yep.
Did you wanna comment on that? Yeah?
We are quite familiar with this situation, in that when, when we built Boltwood Walk, we had a 10-foot retaining wall next to the, right up against the garage, the lower level of the garage. So we understand that, and we also understand the specifications for any encroachment onto the, on the garage at that time in terms of the fill that goes, the floatable fill that has to go back into repairs of tiebacks and things like that. So we know this very well.
Should I open it up to the, are we ready to? Does the board have questions? Any more questions? Jack?
Well, I, I think Mike's letters is, was presented to us, and I read it. And I, I felt, you know, it was, it was stern, and for me, I'm not an architect. I'm not a designer by any means, but for me, as I, as I look at the two elevation views of 2017 and 2018, because I was curious, like, how did this change so much? Because when I look at it, I didn't think it looked that different. Again, I'm just a geologist. But for me, it's, it's gray, all right, and it's got these big gables. And that's what I see when I look at the design, and then I look at the Episcopal Church, and I look over at the Lord Jeff, and I see, like, wow, that stone is what, you know, puts it all together if you're on Spring Street, and it's got, it's got the gables. And, you know, with regard to the dormers, I, I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of dormers, I guess. But I, I thought, I thought that I didn't see the big swing in the design from what was looked at and approved last year and what is presented now. And I have a hard time understanding why, you know, a 3-1 vote came against it. But, like I said, I'm a geologist.
Presumably a different DRB, I mean, in other words, and we're a different planning board also, so that might be one reason.
So I, I hear what you're saying, and I sort of agree, like, when you look, when I looked at both, the old and the new, I see pros and cons with both. In some ways, I like where it's a residence. I like the greater glass windows and sliders, and it has more of a residential, there's still the stone, like you said, that ties in with the other buildings. Where on the old design, it looked more, I'm gonna use the dormy to me or something, 'cause it had, like, the smaller, littler windows. So in some ways, I think this is more attractive. The dormers, you know, I think it just cut up the roof, but again, we've talked about the solar, if that's the trade-off. So I think there's, and I do wanna say, I do like, on the front side, I do like the offset now. Is that what you'd, you know, where, instead of it all being flush, and how the western building is sort of like pushed back? I, I think it adds some eye interest, but we have architects on the board, I don't know.
No, they left. That's you, Paul.
And so, and then also, in his letter, he talks about the, kind of the bait-and-switch thing with, they're gonna be families moving in here, and now it's gonna be all studio. But I, I, I think any housing is, for the Town of Amherst, is, is good, because it's gonna take some relief and the pressure on single-family homes within the town, that these people that would be taking studios would, their other choice would be taking over single-family homes and putting that rental pressure on starter houses. You know, so for me, it's like, housing, I, we, I think it helps, you know? This type of development relieves pressure, which there is intense pressure in this town from, from all kinds of perspectives, be it availability of housing, you know, ability, you know, for starter homes, be it taxes, the property taxes in town, just, anyway. I, that was in, he spoke to that, Mike Burton Wilson spoke to that, I just kinda wanted to say that.
And Ben, you know, I'm definitely, I, you know, really appreciate the comments about the architecture that are from the DRB, and don't feel in a position to sort of override some of the comments they made about the aesthetics of the building. I mean, I think there's also a lot of venturing into other territories, you know, about the, who's gonna live here and things like that, that are possibly, whether or not it has parking is arguably beyond the scope. I mean, that's, those are really sort of the planning board issues. So one can't help but see if that was part of what's going on here. But if you scan through it and see the comments on the architecture, I think that there was actually, you know, very thoughtful conversation about, you know, how this aesthetic has evolved. I don't, personally, I don't see those dormers as a huge deal, 'cause I think that the improvement is in the way the facades are articulated. So these are, and I think that that's part of the commentary in here, is that maybe the trade-off is a more articulated facade, and then the loss of the dormers. But the dormers were along the flanking edge, this is anyway. And there's nothing to say that the abutting properties can't build right up to their, whatever their legal setback is, and basically obscure whether or not there are dormers, you know, anyway. So you can see the police station, which does have dormers, that are sort of pasted on to the, to that gable roof. And I don't, I would have to, I only noticed that now, so I definitely have not noticed that on the street.
Just to address, Michael had on number three, the abandonment of the underground parking spaces, which provided on the original proposal, and that likely removal of the few current on-street spaces will exasperate the already crowded Spring Street. So parking is important, but they, the way that our, we are municipal parking district is, they are not required to provide any parking. It is a shame that the parking garage disappears, but I am pleased to see on the latest drawings that the bump-out was removed, and the existing parking will stay. You can see that they put trees instead on the terrace, which I think is nice and breaks up the building. And of course, if the utilities do manage to go underground, there would be even twice as many spots potentially available. So I just wanted to say, I do like the improvement that was made over the last couple of weeks. And then the fourth one, I just wanna make one comment on the, that the original presentation called for a gallery space. I think it did, but I don't think a developer can guarantee who's gonna take their rental or commercial space. I think it was that they hoped that their gallery, or they were in conversations. Now we hear those conversations of a coffee shop or whatever. But we're building buildings that will hopefully last for decades, and I don't want us to see us working on a permit where we're even considering what exactly is going into the multi-use space, because that's impossible to guarantee.
And just one more point, just going further in his letter, he talks about consistency with the, respect of the setbacks. And, and, but I, again, I, I do believe Lord Jeff, just across the street, is approximately adjacent to the sidewalk, similar to the proposed.
It's more or less zero setback, but.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think it is consistent, is all I'm saying, and he said.
There's different consistencies, so you can look at the Lord Jeff and see zero, or you can look at the church and the house and see not zero. So that's always a balance of how to measure that.
Sorry, I have one more comment. And this area is the BG, right? And we have so little BG in our already so little, small downtown area that is able to have anything be built on it. You know, I think a, a four-story building is appropriate in a BG, if you look at it as where we can put our, our buildings on.
Other comments on the board, maybe you hear from the public? Yeah?
Evening, I'm Eric Brody, I'm Chair of the Amherst Public Art Commission. I've spoken before on this matter, and also at the Design Review Board meeting, and I feel a little bit like Don Quixote tilting his windmills on this subject. But because the composition of the planning board is a little different than when I last spoke, I have a question at the end, but I wanna preface that question with just a couple of comments. As you probably know, the mission of the Public Art Commission is to promote and facilitate the extension and availability of public art in the Town of Amherst. It's part of our mission, it is our mission, and it's part of the master plan as well. So we're a town commission, and that's our job. And in addition to us being interested in that, the residents of Amherst, we feel, are strongly in favor of that, as shown in their vote a year ago for public art, present for art, by law for public art and town projects. And I understand that the planning director is also in favor of public art in town. And I've also spoken with Dave Williams, and he is also in favor of public and supportive of our efforts in town. But what doesn't seem to happen, and here I'm getting to the question, is how do we make this happen? How do we get these conversations going between private developers in the Town of Amherst? So far, they haven't occurred in any of the Design Review Board or Planning Board meetings that I've attended. And I'm not quite sure whether this is the forum to even raise it this evening, but it's one of the few forums we have in the Art Commission to make our feelings known, like the Tree Warden. I mean, there are, we're interested in the trees, and we have long discussions about cutting trees down. Well, we're interested in public art, too, but we don't seem to have those discussions when new building projects are proposed. It's in the notes that I've spoken, both at the Design Review Board and the previous Playing Board Commission, and I'll continue to do this, and my question is, how do we help, how do we help make this happen? How do we have these conversations so that it becomes part of the discussion besides parking and landscaping and the size of windows and setbacks? What about public art? Thank you.
Do you wanna?
Oh, I was gonna say that, I know we talked about the public art at the end of the last hearing. Christine brought it up, and I think we were looking for, you know, a solution to your concern.
Well, I think at the last meeting, Eric brought up a good point, that in the renderings for Kendrick Place, we did show art in that plaza that we created, where the step-back facade is on the southwest side. And I must say that I'm very encouraged by the art that's on Kendrick Park right now, that we would like to reopen that discussion for some type of juried art in that plaza location. We don't know how they would get there, who the jury would be, but we think that, that we should go ahead and fulfill what that rendering expressed. Along, now that we have the streetscape that's been improved, I mean, that was all torn up for a while there, so we really had no choice. But now it's all put together with new streetlights, the roundabout, new sidewalks, and we're finishing up One East Pleasant, that we should reopen that discussion again.
Actually, I have a question. That sounds great. Do we have a slide of the back of the building? Is that possible? In the stuff we got last week, there's one of this.
I don't think we have a slide of that.
Well, I don't know if y'all can see it.
I could probably find one.
So, you know, art, I, you know, I'm not an artist, but when I look at the back of the building, and now I hear why there, you know, there's various reasons why there's no windows, but it is, you know, from our main street, you will see some of this, and it's pretty drab. So to me, sometimes art is what makes something that's drab look more interesting. And I don't know, I'm not saying just a mural, I don't know, it could be wrought iron. I, you know, I'm not an artist, but, you know, could that be a consideration to beautify the building or put something, you know, and I, art is, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I know that gets into a whole different animal, you know? We don't have a committee, I, I don't, you know, I don't know how that would be vetted and how that's a, we have enough discussions about how the building looks, never mind, like, what would be the appropriate art. But I'm just saying, maybe that is a, an.
maybe that is a, an area that could be thought about.
Well, as you know, the mural that's gonna be going back up on the back of One East Pleasant got delayed a year by the artist because of curing of the brick and treatment of the surface and so forth. But certainly, once we go through that experience, we'll have a better idea as to how we can, you know, cope with materials that he's looking for. At this point, I don't know who that goes through, because we don't have an easement at the back of the property like we have. The town has an easement on the back of, of One East Pleasant. And the, the, I think it'd be better on the back of the Masonic Lodge, to tell you the truth. But any case, I would say everything is up for grabs at this point. In fact, we have, now that we've centered the building on the site, we have a lot more lawn space on both the east and the west sides of the building, where art could be displayed on the, on the, on the grass, much as you see in Kendrick Park right now.
I think to Eric's point, public art or some sort of art as part of this building would go a long way in, in raising the bar for future, you know, for future developments, even if not required.
So I have one suggestion, which would be that you could have a condition in your list of conditions that says, if the developer could reach an agreement with the Public Art Commission on some form of public art, that that could come back to you at a public meeting, and it wouldn't have to go through any kind of formal site plan review process. I envision, you know, whenever there's a significant change to a project, the building commissioner says, oh, gotta file a site plan review application. So in order to make it easier, if they were to come to some sort of agreement, you could sort of incorporate it in, in advance by saying, all right, if you have an idea about public art, you can come back to us and show it to us at a public meeting, and we'll talk about it. Just greases the wheels a little bit.
Yeah.
Chris, I ask you a question, please. Does that restrict or enhance the opportunity to change the art? In other words, it rotates so that we're not stuck with a, a piece that, you know, that a jury may agree upon, but at the same time, the developer may not, or may have a problem with the tenants in the building?
I would think that could be sort of a revolving issue, that you would continue to come back to the planning board every time you had a new piece of art that you wanted to install?
To be discussed? Yeah. I should ask, is there anyone else? Okay.
Just in response, first of all, I welcome this discussion and the ability and interest that Dave just expressed. I think that to facilitate this process, what makes sense is for the Public Art Commission to take a role in this, to meet with the developer, in this case, Archipelago. And I've also been in discussion, I should tell you, with the Beacon Group, with the North Amherst Project, same, same story, same issues, and trying to just sensitize developers to the desire of Amherst for public art. But here, I think there's, I mean, we can serve a real service here. The Public Art Commission can discuss with the developer what the options are, what kind of art would be appropriate for the site. And there may be several possibilities on any particular site, whether it's on a building itself, or in the lawn, or permanent, temporary. That should all be subject to discussion, depending on the project. And it seems to me that between the developer and the Public Art Commission, you come forward with a proposal that makes sense, that the Public Art Commission has approved, and it's sort of pre-vetted, in a way, for the Planning Board or the Design Review Board to then look at and decide whether that, they think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I see none. So back to the planning board.
So I know that this is not our job to talk about the architecture in the planning board, but I think, having looked at the two versions, I'm not alarmed by the revised version. I do understand that, to me, the sole merit of the dormers are that they really break the rhythm of the roof, and they kind of make it into smaller pieces. But other than that, I think the elevations, to me at least, have somewhat improved. And so I'm just sharing that as a thought in general.
Great.
So I support the idea that was mentioned of reducing the overall height of the building by five inches, which would accompany the matching of the curb to accommodate the handicap drop-off zone. And on the issue of the dormers, I agree that the current design looks better in my eye. And one of the main issues that comes up, in line with my previous comment about the height, is that with the dormers on the building, the building actually strikes me as more imposing from those directions where you see the dormers. So I think the omission of the dormers is a step in the right direction.
I just wanted to note, on the issue of the height, I wouldn't make any final decision unless you kind of know a range that you would be willing to live with. In other words, instead of locking into five inches shorter than what is being proposed, I would say anything from what's being proposed minus five inches or whatever, just to make sure, because this has not gone through any kind of engineering process, and, you know, you don't want to approve something that couldn't be accomplished.
And I don't mean to step into the architecture, but the pitch could also be changed. So right now, it's a 12-12. It's 12-12? So it could be eleven and a half and 12. In other words, it could be, the pitch could be changed in a way that no one would ever notice, but it would, it would address this concern about, you know, about the overall height. You would notice, but I wouldn't.
Well, if you imagine our house...
You couldn't use the trusses in the backyard? But also, things can be lowered than, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're not in contract lots.
Yeah, yeah. Some ways, I wish that it would just go to whatever's by right and just take off the table, you know, the question of the special permit for the height. But I think five inches is...
Every little bit. So just to make sure, there are varying heights that have been proposed here. The first height that you were confronted with was one foot three inches more than 55. And then I had a conversation with Mr. Williams and Mr. Wilson last week, that sounded like it might be one foot seven. So, and now we're talking about something minus five. So I would suggest, if you are inclined to approve this, that you approve the maximum, which would be one foot seven more than 55 feet, and then they can work on making it lower if they're able to. Or you could have them come back and present something.
Well, I'd almost have it the other way, that assume the five inches and come back if it needs to be taller than that. Yeah.
I think the building commissioner will make them come back for a new application, if it's taller.
Oh, you're right, because it's expanding the, that's five inches, up 55 feet, yeah.
So that would be 56, 7?
56, 7 is the maximum height that I have heard from Archipelago.
With an attempt to reduce it.
Yeah. What else? So by the way, there's six of us. We need five to approve a site plan review. We need six to approve this special permit. The special permit's under consideration of the height. And, does that, no?
There's some question about the rear yard setback. And I've heard varying things from Archipelago, one being that there's not going to be any roof overhang, and one being that there might be a roof overhang. So depending on how you measure the setback, you know, whether you measure it from the face of the building or from the eve, their intent is that one of those two things is going to be on the property line. But we're not really sure exactly which one. And so my feeling is, give them some wiggle room, maybe up to a foot or something like that. Because the rule is, it's either zero or 10 feet, which...
I'm gonna stay on the planning board just for the purpose of fixing this, because we made it sort of an impossible condition to meet, because we changed the measurement from the furthest projecting element to the body of the building. And in doing so, any building that has any sort of an overhang, like an eve, which is most buildings, can't meet it, because the body of the building can't be at the zero setback, because the projecting elements project onto private property, which is illegal. So they have to be held back, and that triggers a special permit. So we need to say for this particular setback, no setback is required, period. And then there's no special permit. So the zero to 10 just doesn't make any sense. But we have had this discussion all, all the time.
That would be in the future.
For me?
I said that would be in the future.
The next planning board can deal with this.
So this one, we're assuming the eve or the building, is it zero?
But if it's the eve, then the building will be back whatever that dimension is. So you can see it right here.
But Chris is saying add in a...
I would say give them one foot allowance. It can be zero to one foot away from the property line, and then whatever.
I guess I'm making the point that the special permit part of this, so one that we have to be unanimous on, is regarding this basically one foot extra height, or whatever, one foot six inches extra height, and this crazy setback requirement that we haven't fixed yet.
Yes. We met with the building inspector, and Chris, remind me if I'm saying this right, but he said that the, the roof, which is a piece of metal, extends out six inches? He's considering the face of the building.
Okay. Then you can take it off after the...
You can't, you can't have the roof extend into the neighboring property. So that's why we need this. I think it's a conversation that hasn't quite concluded yet.
You should go around selling setback makers with setback makers, which are appendages to buildings, that'll help you. But I understand what you're saying, so that if the body of the building has a buttress on it almost, that lines up with the eve, then that satisfies...
The eve overhangs the body of the building.
Yep. But the measurement is from the face of the building.
He's considering the face of the building at the edge of the, of the metal roof.
Right. So there's the face of the building, maybe. But then in the back, it only looks like one corner. That one corner that touches the zero would be the six-inch issue, because the other corners are all set in a tiny bit. So is that what we're talking about? We're talking about that back corner, that one, and then the front of the building?
And that's the other crazy thing about this particular part of the bylaw, is that it's like, just one piece of the building has to hit it, and then it's considered zero setback, and then...
Right.
Yeah. Doesn't have to be the whole thing. Are we ready to work our way through?
I just have one more hanging issue to ask. There was talk, I think the DRV talked about this, too, the awning on the front, and it was like gonna be two feet or something? And does that go into the public way? And it was asked to be bigger? Yeah, Chris, or someone?
It's not an awning, it's just a projection over the entrance into the café. It goes out over the door. There's no awning.
Not into the public way?
No.
It may go into the public way. According to the last conversation I had with Mr. Wilson, part of that may go into the public way. So given the fact that the building has zero setback on that one bar that they call it. So the building commissioner has said that if any portion of the building goes into the public way, it may or may not go, but if it does, and it doesn't really have anything to do with you, it has to do with the select board. The select board would have to make a determination about whether they would allow that or not. And if they didn't allow it, then Archipelago would just pull the building back in order to, their canopy wouldn't go into the public way. But you would not have to grant anything for that.
I think, in fairness to the people that wrote letters, and a number of people wrote letters, that maybe we could discuss whether or not any issues that they have brought up, we have not yet considered. Like Denise Barberette brought up an issue. So a lot of these came by email, actually, hard copies. But was, were there anything, there's one from Ira Burke, one from Denise Barberette, one from obviously Michael Burt Whistle. My sense is that we've considered pretty much everything that has been brought up. And some of the issues really are legislative. So in other words, concerns about parking or overall height and things like that are in the bylaw. So we have to work with what the bylaw, you know, allows. Are we ready to try to work our way through conditions, criteria? So Chris sent a possibility of at 5.9, Chris sent a possibility of what those might be. And I think those are in your hard copies?
There's the latest version that's dated August 1st.
Is that here in front of us?
Yes, it's got the red markings on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Got it. So this doesn't line up with site plan review criteria, but these would be added on to, yeah, okay. So let's go through the actual site plan review criteria and see where we are. So...
We all have copies, I suppose, I gave them to you, but I can't find mine.
So we got 11.24. And so we're gonna start with general and just stop. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm just gonna go through these quickly, and just raise your hand, or just say stop if you want to talk about something. Compliance with all provisions of the bylaw. Protection of town amenities and abutting properties. Protection of abutting properties from detrimental site characteristics.
So can we go back to the one, 2401, protection of town amenities and abutting properties?
Yeah.
You could say that the condition that we recommended about the structural analysis and the geotechnical analysis, that that back wall would satisfy that?
Perfect.
And permission of the select board would satisfy whatever is going on in the town right of way? Is that okay?
That sounds good.
But my, my question, though, is that, are those, would that be sufficient? Would that condition be sufficient to, to, or those two conditions be sufficient to meet these two points? And I, it's, I just have the question. I don't really have the formulation of a response.
So those are, those are a particular example of town amenities, but are there other broader ones, is the question?
Yes.
Yeah. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Yeah, we can always come back. I circulate us coming back, too. I'm gonna keep going. 11.2403, provision of adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities.
May I say, usually in the downtown area, you've referred to the public open spaces that are available, such as the town common, that's within walking distance.
Yeah. So I'm at 11.241. First one, protection of unique or important natural, historic, or scenic features. Adequacy of proposed methods of refuse disposal.
And I have, I mean, I was on Spring Street a bunch today, and Lord Jeff had, I don't know whether it was garbage or recycling day, but there was, I mean, it's a, it's a narrow street, and adding 58 units is considerable. And there is no other, as I understand, it will be done by, as you said today, I believe, double parking the vehicles that are servicing the building. are servicing the building in front. Is that, is that fair? Did I understand you?
Well, the degree of truck servicing, the Lord Jeff is a heck of a lot more that's going to be coming to us. We will get a probably a garbage truck every three days, amirist maintenance, I mean, amirist...
Trucking.
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 Trucking. They service all of our buildings and they're very efficient. They're there for 10 minutes and they're gone. That's it. Other than just a van drop off.
Sewers disposal, water supply, proposed drainage within and adjacent to the site to handle the increased runoff.
The town engineer was okay with the scheme for stormwater?
Adequate landscaping, including the screening of adjacent residential uses, provision of street trees.
So they, they have a lot of, a lot more landscaping on this plan than they had on the other plan. And they've added some trees to the front of the building in their little terrace area by the patio.
Soil erosion plan and a plan for protection of steep slopes. Protection of adjacent properties by minimizing the intrusion of air and water, pollution, flood, noise, odor and dust and vibration. Protection of adjacent properties by minimizing the intrusion of lighting.
Downcast lights.
Yeah. Protection of, from flood hazards, protection of wetlands. Okay, I'm on 11.242. The first one, within the BL, these don't apply.
Yeah, doesn't apply.
So nothing, within the BG and abutting BL. Okay, so the design review, provisions of the design review board shall remain in effect. So how do we address this, assuming that we're moving forward? So we've considered the recommendation of the design review board and...
That's it?
Yeah.
Considered though?
Yeah. Consistent with respect to setbacks, placement of parking and landscaping and entrances and exits. Okay. Should avoid to the extent possible impact on steep slopes and some other things. If there's more than one building on the site, there isn't. Screening shall be provided for storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters, et cetera. I'm on traffic and parking. The site shall be designed to provide for the convenience and safety of vehicles and pedestrians.
It's really not applicable because there are no vehicles on the site.
Right. Curb cuts shall be, there are no curb cuts. No parking spaces. Access to, yeah?
Just bike racks? Did we ever, there were on the previous, I remember there were going to be bike storage and bike racks.
I'm going to buy one of these things. All of our projects have massive amounts of bike storage in it because that seems to be the way things are going. I think if you notice the usage of the bikes on the common now, the electric bikes that they'd have, those things, I mean, it's just emptied out almost every morning. So it's been quite a, I was amazed because I didn't think they had a chance. But here we go.
You can thank Chris for being our advocate for that.
Where will the bike racks be? Will they be out on the front or?
They'll be up front and also probably set back on the side, on either side of the landscaped area. But we also are providing bike storage in the, in the basement. Because everybody will have a storage unit and they can put their bikes there.
Would you like to add a condition about that, that they should bring back a plan showing a bike rack?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Access to adjoining properties, driveways, there are no driveways, joint access driveways, none. Traffic impact report. So this was requested to be waived and I assume that we'll consider waiving this as part of criteria. And then the next one doesn't apply. So that's it for site plan review criteria. So the special permit findings, and this is for the one foot, three inch extra height and for this crazy setback. 10.380, suitably located in a neighborhood in which it's proposed. Compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by right. Not constitute a nuisance. Would not be a substantial inconvenience to abutters vehicles or pedestrians. Facilities would be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. Protect the adjoining premises. In conformance with parking and sign. Convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. Ensures adequate space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Adequate methods of disposal and storage for sewage and refuse. And ensures protection from flood hazards. But that's, but wait, there's more.
So many, may I just say, many of these seem to be not applicable?
Yes. Protects to the extent feasible, unique or important, natural or historic. Adequate landscaping. Protects adjacent properties through adequate lighting. Avoids to the extent possible impact on steep slopes. Okay. Proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain and to the use scale and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity which have functional or visual relationship thereto. Within BG and the abutting BL districts and for any town project within any district, design review shall remain in effect. So again, we've considered the design review board. And we, I think we've all noted that this is a part that Mike Burt Whistle had a problem with. Proposal provides screenings for storage areas, loading docks, dumpsters. Provides adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities, and in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw. So...
Yes. Say one more thing. I think it would be a good idea to make findings under footnote A because footnote A has that requirement that in applying the criteria, special permit granting authority shall consider the proposed modified dimensional requirement in the context of the pattern of the same dimensions established by existing buildings and landscape features in the surrounding neighborhood. So you could say something about how other buildings in the downtown have something between zero and one foot setback.
Yes.
That's one thing. And the other thing about height, that there are other buildings in the surrounding area of equal or higher dimension.
Yeah.
In that block.
So Chris has given us this helpful extra conditions. So do you want to read through that and see if we agree with these?
I think you could just say that if they do reach an agreement with the public art commission, that you would entertain a review of the art at a public meeting rather than having them come back to a public hearing. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Assuming it's site based art. All right. I hear no comments on the, those proposed conditions. So let's assume that those will be also adopted as part of any proposal that we might entertain. So with that, is anyone ready to make a motion?
I move to close the public hearing and to grant the waivers as requested, to find that the proposal meets all the requirements of sections 10.38 and 11.24 of the zoning bylaw, and to grant the special permit and site plan review approvals with conditions as written in the draft written by staff dated August 1st, 2018, and the additional conditions discussed.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any, any more discussion? I see none. So all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. So you bundled the special permit and the site plan review together, yes?
I can break those apart. I amend my motion.
So we've just voted. So we just voted. So let's figure out a voluntary...
I don't think we've fully voted yet.
Yeah, you stopped after yes.
Oh, you didn't? What? We don't know.
Oh, because there, because there are different voting requirements for the two actors.
The special permit has to be, let's do a...
Do the... Site plan review first and then...
Yeah. So I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we roll back the tape and do this separately because there's different voting requirements for each.
Yep. I'll amend my motion to stipulate that it applies only to the site plan review portion of the hearing.
Second.
And not closing the public hearing yet.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
Wait, wait, wait. One second, one second, please, for clarification. The site plan review requires unanimity for...
No, no, it's a special permit.
That's a special permit. Requires the six votes.
One requires five, the other one requires six.
And it's the site plan that requires five.
Yes.
But the special permit requires the unanimity among this number. Okay.
And the special permit is for the height and the rear yards.
Right.
So site plan review, all in favor of the motion? I count five, all opposed. Abstentions?
Yeah. I, I, I think, I think that there's, I, again, I think that this is a significant project and that there are reservations expressed from the public as well as within the board and that I at least would benefit from hearing from the full body prior to, I'm not opposed to the site plan approval, but I, I feel like there's just so much material in these conditions. I tried keeping up with them the last two or three days. I just didn't have the time. That, that it would benefit from a little more, I would, I would feel much more comfortable with, with that extra time to consider the body, this body of material for something. Again, it was said earlier, once you start, once you start the building, you can't stop it. So it's there for 50 years or 100 years.
Let's see what Chris has.
So you could continue the public hearing. Even though you closed the public hearing, you could vote to reopen it because we're still in session. Same people are still here. You could vote to reopen the public hearing and continue it to a date certain in the future.
If I could just clarify, I did amend my motion to not close the public hearing since we were only voting on that portion for the site plan review.
Not to close on either portion.
No.
And just to clarify, the site plan just passed.
The site plan review's passed. So now, now what's left on the table are the height and the setback, the rear setback.
So I would record Mr. Levinstein as abstaining from the vote on the site plan review.
And...
So we don't have enough people to vote.
Well, we don't know how the next vote will go. And I guess I should ask.
Well, we need, we only have five and we need six to pass it.
We don't know how David will vote.
But again, again, clarification, the special permit is for the height, which we've now set a condition for being not 56.7, not higher than 56.7, or did we set the condition for 56.2?
We discussed the condition of not exceeding 56 foot, seven inches in the developer to make a reasonable effort to reduce that height.
By five inches.
Thank you. And then the, and the other special permit was for the setback, right?
Setback, something between zero and one foot.
For the eve.
To allow them some flexibility at the rear of the building.
Thank you for the clarifications. So I, I don't, this, this is, seems much more theatrical or suspenseful than it should be, but does it, does it hang on my, it does, the passing of it hangs on my vote for the number that we are.
Yes, for the number we are. A five to zero, one vote does not pass.
And since we've, we could have continued this public hearing in the beginning and that would have allowed Mr. Crowner and Ms. Chow to vote. But since you've held this session, they have now missed two sessions. So they can't now catch up. So we're, this is the body that you're dealing with.
And, well, we can talk about the whole, your other issues after we reach some sort of closure on this. But the other issues regarding the presence of the entire body of the planning board or whatever, but...
So that...
I mean, to speak, I, I don't have reservations about the height or the setback, really. I think I do have, so, so that we would, that would, if it were hanging on my vote, that would pass. I do have quest, you know, I'd like it to percolate longer, the scope of the project as I understand it today. But, so, I mean, I get, I get sort of no satisfaction. But that's okay. That's, that's democracy.
Let's try a motion then for the special permit.
I'll move to close the public hearing and grant the waivers as requested. Grant the request for special permit approval with the conditions as discussed and find that the proposal meets all the requirements of section 10.38 of the zoning bylaw.
And footnote A.
And footnote A as discussed.
I will second that.
All in favor, raise your hand. I see six votes. So that passes unanimously? Is that it? Okay. You're, yep.
That's it?
Yes. Use the mic one last time. So you still have a lot of homework.
So, yeah. May I just interject one thing? I think you would like to see final drawings showing the drop off area as it actually will be.
Yes.
And I will put that in the conditions. Okay? That's all right with you?
Great.
All right. So let me get back to my agenda.
Oh, my God.
Can I look at your given agenda?
There you go. Right here.
So we're going to keep moving down the...
Thank you. Thanks.
So three, planning and zoning, did this?
Yes, he has not met.
Okay. How the comment regarding zoning? This may be a good place for your letter. Yeah. Is that why you're here to speak about your letter? No, actually, yeah, come for it.
Is this, did you get it?
Yeah, this is going.
Yeah.
The letter was in the very back.
Right here. Somewhere.
Hi. Thank you for considering my letter. The letter explains itself. I just wondered since town meeting a little over two months ago now, whether there's been any discussion or if the zoning subcommittee has had a chance to talk about, when I presented my article, I was told this was not the best way to accomplish my goals. And so I just would like to know what that way is and let you know that our neighbors are still concerned. We had a fracking of a well the day after town meeting ended.
Yeah. Well, I would say that the zoning subcommittee has met a few times since town meeting closed and that item has certainly come up. And the zoning subcommittee has been short either one or two members for the last couple of times we've met or would have met. So we haven't done a whole lot of work since the close of town meeting. But one of the things we have worked on is compiling a list of recommendations to the future town council. And that item has certainly come up and is included in our thinking.
So, can I speak?
Yeah, yeah.
So to clarify, you wouldn't take action before the new town council is in place? Is that correct?
Zoning subcommittee and the planning board have no intention at this time of bringing any sort of zoning proposals to any possible town meeting. any sort of zoning proposals to any possible town meeting session.
Okay. I didn't quite understand when I presented my article that zoning... I was under the impression that zoning was not the proper way to approach this issue, so I think the planning board as a whole would be, hopefully, presenting ideas that are not related to changing zoning, right?
Just let's see what Chris says.
So, the planning board and the zoning subcommittee have had discussions on this, and actually, Mr. Jemsek has shared some of his professional expertise with, to the effect that 30,000 square feet for a lot that has a septic system and a well on it may not be the appropriate size, and so I think that the zoning subcommittee is open to engaging in research and discussion about that issue. What we are currently facing is the fact that we don't believe there's going to be another town meeting, so there's not an opportunity to present a zoning amendment to a town meeting. The next time we'll have that opportunity would be the town council, which probably won't be till next spring when they will want to be around, get around to zoning amendments. So I think that the zoning subcommittee has put on their list of things that need to be addressed, this issue that you've brought forth to them, and they intend to take it seriously and try to figure out what is an appropriate size for a lot that has a well and a septic system on it, and Mr. Jemsek may be able to advise us on that. So that's kind of where this is right now.
So, all I'd ask is that our... If I could be notified when discussions are happening about it, I have neighbors that have interest in this issue, so if possible... I know that tonight specifically, my letter was being addressed, which I'm thankful I had this opportunity. I just wondered if there's a way of communicating, since I seem to be the point person for this issue, when an agenda item is coming up to discuss this, just because I'm curious and interested and maybe would have input. I have quite a slew of information here that I don't think other people in town have about septics and wells in the immediate area where I live, and, well, in the whole area, actually, Flat Hills area that's above where town water can be supplied. So, hopefully, I could be helpful. I just offer that, so...
Yeah, I would encourage you, you know, within the neighborhood, I could do one, if you can obtain information with regard to, you know, the type of wells and the depth and the casing length and, you know, yield and general performance, water quality. I mean, if people feel are like-minded as yourself, you should be able to help the town make a decision with that, because it is, I mean, these older features, the septic system wells, they just aren't readily available records, so... But if people can, you know, volunteer what information they have, but it certainly is helpful.
I guess the question for me is that it's... I mean, I've done quite a bit of legwork. Some of the information is hearsay from Gertie Morin, for instance, our superintendent, and he mentioned, you know, he didn't remember the exact address, so I'm in the position of going door to door asking, "Have you had well problems?" I mean, it just seems a little bit beyond the scope of what a citizen should expect to do. I'm not against trying to find out, and I have information about five particular wells that have had problems in the area, so if that specific information is useful, I've got that. So, I can submit that in writing. Is that a helpful way to start?
May I just say, so I think Mr. Kaner's aware that we have kind of a bulletin that comes out whenever a planning board meeting or a zoning subcommittee meeting is posted, and you can sign up for these, and we usually put, you know, the general topics that are going to be discussed, so you could check there, and then just call my office periodically and find out, you know, when is the zoning subcommittee or the planning board meeting, when are they likely to discuss this issue? My guess is that they're probably not going to get around to discussing it till next spring because what we need to do is get direction from town council about what they would like us to work on. So, we're gonna present a list to town council of all the things that have come up and that the zoning subcommittee has been working on, and then town council will have to give us some guidance. So, my thought is, there's probably not going to be a huge effort on this particular topic between now and next spring, but, you know, I suppose if you were to come to many zoning subcommittee meetings and you kept bringing it up, there might be an impetus to study this more, you know. It might rise to the top, I don't know.
And, you know, obviously, the people running for town council, I would imagine you've talked to them. Yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Now, are you here just for...
Just enjoying.
Just enjoying?
Enjoying.
Pardon me?
Enjoying.
Okay. Popcorn is... So, let's see, other? Anything other under zoning?
So, yeah, on the second page, old business.
Okay, you're under old business. Which one are you?
A.
Yeah.
Is this related to...
Oh, yeah, so the Coles letter.
So this isn't related to the Coles letter. This is related to a sort of a continuing thorn in our sides where we have misunderstood what the direction of the registry is with regard to Elsie Fetterman's property.
This is Applebrook.
Which one?
No, it's...
I'm here for Applebrook.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, well, do we want to talk about Applebrook or Elsie?
Sure, you have one.
So, Applebrook...
Agenda.
No, Elsie Fetterman. You signed, Mr. Stutzman signed a certificate testing to the fact that the subdivision plan had been amended, and we filed it with the town clerk, and then we had you sign a plan, and then Mr. Burson took it to the registry, and it turned out it didn't have a particular note on it, so he came back and told us, "Put the note on the plan," or it doesn't matter if it's on the plan or their certificate. And then, that's what the registry told him, and so we did all of that, and he took them to the registry and they said, "Oh, no, we meant that you have to have this note on the certificate." So now we're coming back to you to have the certificate re-signed, and in 21 days, we will come back to you and have you re-sign the plan, and hopefully, it will then go through the registry and everything.
That is the hope. Hopefully, fourth time's the charm.
Yeah. In the meantime, I think the building commissioner has given some leeway to Ms. Fetterman.
That's my understanding as well. So, I can reiterate that, I mean, that was very well explained. David Burson from Bacon Wilson, so I guess here on behalf of Elsie Fetterman, 148 Locktown Road. The long and short of it is, we originally hoped to just have the note put on the plan, because by putting the note on the certificate, it requires that we go through the 20-day appeal process all over again, which is what we were hoping to avoid since we've already been through it once, but there not having been any appeal the first time around, I think at this point, we just want to go through whatever process we're told we have to go through by the registry and get this thing on record, so...
Okay, so what's the action from us?
It's all set.
So it's all set. Mr. Stutzman just signed it.
Thank you.
With regard to Applebrook, may I explain?
Yes, thank you.
So, Applebrook subdivision was approved back in 2007, and at that time, there were covenants put on the property to the point that property couldn't be built upon until lots were released. What our normal course of events is, is to receive a request from an applicant, and then we pass the request along to the town council, I mean, town engineer, and the town engineer goes out and sees if the infrastructure has been established to the point where lots can be built upon. So, Mr. Cole, the owner of the property, has requested release of all but Lot 4, I believe. He wants release of all seven lots, but he's willing to hold back on Lot 4. So, I did reach out to the town engineer, and he sent back an email saying that he wasn't yet satisfied, and I thought he had copied either Tom Reedy or Mr. Burson. Anyway, I have that email here somewhere. Essentially, he needs to have the water line retested because it was filled at one point, and then it lay dormant, and he's worried that the water in there isn't fresh and pure. He also has to go and check the pavement that's there, and there were a couple of other issues. So I have not gotten a clean bill of health from the town engineer yet to release these lots. I have all the paperwork here, but unfortunately, I cannot recommend release the lots, releasing the lots today.
So, my office did also speak with Jason Skiles, attorney Reedy, who briefed me before coming here tonight, and per, I guess, his discussion, there was still, I guess, there's, as far as the pavement is concerned, the, I guess, the only coat that is left is there maybe one last top coat that needs to go on, but the actual roadway is installed, and Jason Skiles had agreed with that. As far as the water is concerned, they've all been installed according to the specifications. They checked out as far as engineering is concerned. The only thing he needed to check was the potability of the water, so the water mains work, it's just a question of, is it actually drinkable right now? So, we are still requesting that maybe not all the lots be released, but at least maybe some of the lots be released, with the understanding that the remaining lots are sufficient collateral to ensure that these things are actually done, and also understanding that the, you know, if it's a requirement, and I think it's an appropriate requirement, that before any building permits be issued, that these things be met and that Jason Skiles actually sign off on them, but we hope that the very least the board would consider releasing some of these lots tonight.
I'm not really comfortable with that without speaking with Jason myself.
So, I would have to defer to the expertise of Chris Restra in terms of my own, you know, voting on this, if we take this to a vote. Does anyone want to advance?
Well, would it go to our next meeting in two weeks?
It could. I'm not going to be here in two weeks, but you could meet in two weeks and vote on this, and I could have Steve be here just for that one issue, if you wanted to do that.
Are we meeting without otherwise staff?
I am not here in two weeks, so you can choose to meet without me and perhaps have Steve here for some simple things, and then the next possible date is the 29th of August.
Wow, we can do all kinds of things.
So, would you like to meet in two weeks, and I'm sure that by then, this will be resolved and we can get...
Well, is it possible for us to authorize the chair, who has expressed a reservation, which I agree with about waiting for the approval of the planning staff, to release these lots at such a time as the planning staff is comfortable?
You need signatures of the planning board.
Okay.
Is it possible to have the signatures and then hold them in escrow, the staff to hold it in escrow, and not release essentially until...
It's just, I'm not comfortable doing that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Were we gonna have a meeting in two weeks?
Well, you're scheduled to have a meeting on August 15th. You could meet next week. You could meet on August 8th, just for this one issue, if I can get an answer from Jason. And I would be here.
As a replacement to the 15th, or...
Yeah, yep.
And we need five. We need five members for a quorum, five members to vote affirmatively for this.
I think you need five, yeah.
I'm not here on the 8th, but...
Oh.
I won't be here the 15th.
Okay, we're tied.
Oh, you're here on the 8th.
I think so.
8th is okay for me.
Yep.
Yep.
Sounds like we might have a quorum.
It need not be at 7 o'clock either. I mean, whatever time I think members agree on.
Whatever time the board...
5 o'clock on the 8th?
We're right down the street, so...
Are five members available at 5 o'clock on the 18th? I think I heard.
On 8th?
Or, sorry, the 8th, yes.
And we know what 5 o'clock means?
Yeah.
Happy hour.
Is that just for this?
Just for this item, yeah.
Sure.
I have a meeting that runs from 4:30 to 5:30 on the 8th.
6 o'clock?
Yeah, 6.
6 o'clock on the 8th?
Good. I think we have 5, okay.
6 o'clock on the 8th.
Yep.
Who's committing to do that?
Everyone except Steve, I think.
Yeah, I'll be gone.
Do you know if the other two will be back, or three?
One of them will be. Michael would be, yeah.
If I'm not sure he's available.
So we have, so we have Mr. Levinstein, Mr. Stutzman, Ms. Graymullen, Mr. Jemsek, and Mr. Yahi, right, with the 8th?
Yes. That was 6 o'clock, correct?
Yes.
6 o'clock, yeah. Sorry, I'll bug Jason to get me a final answer.
We'll bug him too, while...
Okay, so...
Meeting on the 15th canceled, or...
It was everyone scheduled.
The 15th would be canceled, yep, because we don't have any applications.
Can I just ask, would this meeting on the 8th, would this be the only agenda item?
Yes.
Does it have to be noticed?
Yes. I would have to post a notice 48 hours in advance.
What's our intention for the 29th at this time? Do we plan to meet on the 29th?
If there are applications, we could meet, but otherwise, we don't need to meet.
Got what you're thinking.
I was just curious, because there's five Wednesdays in August, so...
Right, that's right.
That sounds like a movie, five Wednesdays in August.
Exciting movie.
Just for Labor Day.
Rom-com.
Pardon me?
Sounds like a rom-com.
Yeah. Was that it for us?
I think I'm here for maybe one more thing. There's an A&R plan, but we don't need to sit up here for that.
So, are we...
Should we do the Coles thing first?
Do the Coles, yeah, right. I've lost my agenda. I'm gonna go get in.
Here.
Chris, Chris, right here.
Thank you.
So, the next on the agenda was, and then we'll do the A&R, request a refund of application fees from the Coles.
So, Ms. Cindy Jones filed six preliminary subdivision plans in order to protect her property value from the rezoning that was proposed before town meeting this spring, and it never got to the point that we published a legal ad, so it didn't cost us any money. All we did was take in the application. I think we put it into our computer system, and then we just held the drawings and held everything, and then she finally withdrew it after the, after Mr. Kaner's article was referred back to the planning board. So, we really haven't spent any money on this, and she's asking for the refund of the full amount that she spent, which was 6,000 something. And, so the planning board needs to vote to allow us to return that money.
What's our typical practice on this?
What's your...
What's our typical practice?
The typical practice is that you would return the money or you would withhold some portion of it because of some, you know, expense that the town has had.
Oh, God.
You're asking if there's a precedent, right?
Yeah. Have we done this before?
You've always returned the money, at least a portion of it, yeah.
In cases of where... How often does this happen? Because I don't remember.
This particular type of thing hasn't happened before, but we have had applications that have come in that haven't actually gone anywhere, and the applicant has come and asked for a refund, and you have granted the refund, and the zoning board has as well. If it hasn't actually been published or brought to you, town staff hasn't spent any time on it.
Yeah, great.
Did we have a similar preliminary subdivision application when the downzoning was proposed in Northhammers? A different part of Northhammers?
Yes.
And?
And I think they were, they requested return of some of that money. They may have published a legal ad, and so, you know, the legal ads are expensive, so we might have held back the amount to pay for the legal ad, but in this case, there wasn't a legal ad published. I actually sent it in, and then I withdrew it the day after the article was defeated.
And no staff time spent on this issue analyzing the...
No staff time spent analyzing. It was purely putting it into the system, putting into the computer system, so, you know, if you wanted to hold back a couple of hours' worth of time, it probably doesn't make any sense. It's probably more complicated to hold back.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Return the $6,150.
Second.
Okay, second, and, sure, you have a...
Since I'm the petitioner, I just stuck around for this. I just wanted to reinforce my hope that this is refunded. My intention was never to harm Coles Building Supply or Cindy Jones and her family, as you said. I was intending to do it, never was... or Cinda Jones and her family, as she said. I was intending to do it. Never was the case. This was a community issue, and she accused me of treason and all that. I still have no reason to want to harm the business, so I hope you approve the refund. Thank you.
And thank you for saying that. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. There we go. So, why don't we, we'll move on to your next item, the A&R.
So, the A&R, this is an interesting case. This A&R plan came in, I'm going to pass this drawing down to you. The A&R plan came in a while ago, and the request is that Ms. Jones, Cinda Jones, would like to sell or give, I'm not sure which, some of her property to an adjacent landowner, the Puffer Garnier family. I think it might have something to do with the Beacon project, but I don't know any more than that. So, in any event, what was proposed was that, as you will pass that little piece of paper down, you'll notice there's a little tail of the land hanging down to the south. That's very close to the Puffers and Garniers' property. And when I pass around this A&R plan, I think that little tail will become apparent. So, what I'm looking at right now, I don't think we want to do this. I think there was some discussion recently about not combining the properties. Are you familiar with that issue? Right, well, we can sign this plan, and then Bacon Wilson may determine that as a result of some discussion that's happened in the past, they will have you sign another plan that's very similar. But the building commissioner has told me that it's okay to go ahead and sign this plan. All you're doing is saying that this is not a subdivision, and this doesn't need to go through the subdivision process. So, anyway, the issue involved was that when Beacon came in to develop their development, North Square, up in North Amherst, they were faced with the realization that the property there was already non-conforming. And so, they had, or at least they thought it was non-conforming. So, they had to prove to the building commissioner that the property there, 134 Montague Road, which includes the lumber mill and Cinda's Gray House and Atkins Market and that whole area, all that area is shown in yellow, that it was all non-conforming with regard to lot coverage. So, their engineer went through this whole process and showed that that was the case. Then, when Ms. Jones came back and said, I want to give part of this property to the adjacent neighbor, the building commissioner said, hey, wait a minute. You can't do that, because it'll make the property to the north even more non-conforming. So, and you can't do that without a special permit. So, he had Ms. Jones go to the zoning board of appeals and request a special permit to increase the non-conformity on the larger parcel, which she did, and the ZBA approved it. And so, now, even though that parcel will become more non-conforming, it's been approved to be so, and therefore, this piece of land can be transferred to the adjacent landowner. Does that make sense?
Only mullit.
Totally cool.
So, now I'm going to pass around the plan that shows this little piece.
It's like a little, I couldn't figure out.
So, this little piece that's shown in here is the area that's...
Why don't you show, don't just show it to me. I can move, so you can show it to me.
Little piece in the dark.
This dark is going to be transferred to the Puffer Garnier family.
And where, so that dark...
Cinda's land is up here. You can see it.
That's the tip. It's that part.
So, it's just this little bit, this little...
And you can sort of see it on here. This black area is the area that's being transferred.
Is this where the river is?
No.
Or is it the higher up?
Where is it? Wait, hold on. Now, here it is.
This little piece right here is what's being transferred.
And so, just, I got a little bit lost. So, the reason is, without going through the whole...
I think it has something to do with neighbors making settlements with one another, having to do with...
Appeasement relative to Beacon.
That's a good way to put it. Appeasement relative to...
Gotcha.
But what does that actually mean?
Not at liberty.
How is the main property non-conforming?
The main property was non-conforming because the lot coverage was over what it should have been. And it's commercial, so it was allowed to be...
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Dave would have liked to see that.
Turn this off. So, what was your question?
How is it non-conforming?
The bigger property that's shown on that map in yellow was non-conforming with regard to lot coverage, because it had been covered with gravel and bituminous and concrete and all kinds of other things over the years, but nobody had ever really scrutinized it, because there wasn't any plan for developing it. But then, when there came a plan for developing it, it was discovered that it was, it was non-conforming. And so...
You're talking about because of paved?
Because of paved areas, yeah.
I didn't think it was...
I think it was over 70% paved.
Really, huh?
And it wasn't allowed to be over 70%. So, they've jumped through a lot of hoops to get to this point. And will you authorize the chair to sign the plan? Yes.
Okay. Tough crowd tonight.
I have one more A&R, if you're interested. This one isn't really officially filed yet, but it has to do with the Epstein property. And you know, the town made a decision to purchase the Epstein property, and they're making an arrangement with Kestrel Trust to purchase a portion of it. So, this plan here shows the Epstein, oh, you all have them, don't you? Okay, so you all have this map. And this shows the Epstein property down in South Amherst. It's a beautiful piece of property. It has a beautiful pond that was created by the Epsteins, and it has a home on it. And the Epsteins have passed away, and the Kestrel Trust would like to carve out a piece of that land. The town is going to buy the area that's surrounded in black, and the Kestrel Trust is going to buy that kind of long area, kind of oddly shaped.
This one?
Yep. So, they're going to have their offices and storage, et cetera, in the house. The Kestrel Trust will, their nonprofit land trust. And the town will own the rest of the property. And so, the A&R plan hasn't been created yet, but it will be created very soon. And I would like you to authorize the chair to sign the plan. Maybe you could do that on the 8th, if I can get the plan by the, you won't be here, but Greg could sign it. So, if I have it on the 8th, Greg can sign it. If I don't have it until later than that, maybe you could sign it. And the point of this is that the closing for this is supposed to be on the 15th of August. So, that's why, even though they don't have this thing done yet, they wanted me to tell you about it, so that you could make the decision to authorize the chair to sign the plan when it does come in, okay?
Exciting. Okay, thank you. You said there's no, oh, upcoming ZBA, anything you know of?
I have a list of upcoming ZBA's. Yep, Steve gave it to me before he left today. So, there's a landowner, Rick Hanks, on Northeast Street. He wants to build a non-owner-occupied duplex on his property. It's probably not something that's too crucial for you to see. Nina Weil, she lives at 103 High Street, and she wants to amend her existing special permit to create, to convert an existing, excuse me, accessory space, which I think is a yoga studio. And she wants to create a, let's see, existing accessory space at a single-family dwelling from a yoga studio and studio apartment to a two-bedroom apartment.
So, I talked to Nina, that's across the street from my office, and I talked to her about why this requires a special permit, because owner-occupied duplex is normally an SPR.
Maybe it's because it's going from the use of, the use of the yoga studio to this other thing.
But that seems like a downzoning that should be an SPR.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
It could also be because her property is non-conforming.
I think I might, yeah, okay.
WD Coles, oh, increase the non-conforming lot coverage. They've already done that, so I don't know why it's on this list. Ray Mann wants to modify her ZBA permit to add a man-made pond. She has a development of five lots up on, where is it, Owen Drive and North and East Pleasant Street. And she's building some very contemporary houses there. And she wants to add a pond, so she needs a special permit to do that. That's the story with ZBA.
Do we need to hear any of those? Going once? No? SPP, SPR, you said there's nothing?
No.
Planning Board Committee reports, speak up if you have a report. Report of the Chair. Welcome to August.
Yeah.
Report of staff.
We're very busy. Thank you.
A German. Thank you very much.